All right. I'm gonna call the October meeting on new urbanity planned historic preservation commission order, rope call. Armstrong, Clark.
Here.
Huck.
Here.
Treadway.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Winesapple here, Westfall. The September 17 minutes. Everybody look at 'em?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
And Tom, I appreciate you putting the particular numbers of what we're discussing on those minutes.
Seems like it would be helpful, but I didn't do that initially.
But I know you will going forward. I appreciate it.
That's what we're paying you for.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The permit applications, Katie DeFreeze, Katie Cody, and...
Katie's in Florida, if you want to talk to her, I'll call her.
Oh, fine, okay. Did everybody get a chance? She's doing an extensive reno on the garage behind your house.
Did you see it, Tony?
No, I haven't seen that one.
Yeah, that's it. Here, let me pull it up. What's the address?
617 Main Street.
Oh, I should've known that.
Arthur, yeah. It's your neighbor.
Just so you can get an idea of what she's doing there. Hey, that's a good fucking house, but that's not it. So, there is, hey, this is back when Roger had his truck there.
Woo! Okay.
That's a few years old, yeah.
I don't think it goes down this street. So, the, hang on. Okay. This is the garage at the back.
Okay.
I have some pictures on my phone if you need them.
Nah, you're good.
Okay. We just have started using this to place properties that we're talking about.
It's pretty handy, so we all know what we're looking at.
Okay. And she's doing everything from new garage door, insulation, it's quite extensive. And she got it in just a couple of days after the last meeting, so I think, Tom, you told her she could go ahead and do the work inside that was not visible.
I did.
So, I presume she's been working on that.
That's been, the wiring and stuff has been updated and...
Right.
The insulation hasn't on the inside, but the wiring and stuff is done and the roof is painted.
Okay.
To be that same green that's on the house. The roof is on it.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept.
My motion to approve it.
Approve this permit. Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Any further discussion about this?
I think it's awesome what you're doing.
Yeah, I think it's great.
It's great. It's gonna be nice addition.
Really pretty garage door.
Yeah, it's gonna be very nice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I guess I'll vote because we're four people today. I'm in favor too, so, all right. Thank you, thank you for being here.
Okay.
The next one is 2532. Gary Owen is the property owner at 1111 Linwood. Tom Smith is gonna be doing his work, removal of the house, footers, and concrete.
201111?
1111 Linwood.
1111 Linwood.
Just 1111.
That's it.
Yeah.
No.
It will.
That's not it.
There we go.
That's not it.
That is level 111 Linwood, you're right.
He changed, you remember?
It's that one.
He combined two lots.
It's that one, right?
No.
No. No, it's the one on the back, on the very back street that's, he told me anyway, the one on the very back street.
First one you had, that's wood, that belonged to Woods there.
Yeah.
That house right there. Mary Reeves used to live there.
Yeah.
So, that's the one?
That is the one.
That is the one. And we discussed this once before, last year. And we knew that this was coming because he was gonna...
Yeah, that's correct.
Get everything out of it.
And we disconnected, he's disconnected his utilities.
Right.
Appropriately.
Right. Anything you want to add, Tom?
No.
Okay.
When can I start would be the question.
Tomorrow.
Not for another 60 seconds or so. Not till he gives you your permit tomorrow, so tomorrow. So, I have, do you want a motion first before we start to ask questions?
Yeah.
I would move that we approve.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Now, before we vote, I do have a question. So, is he planning on just taking it down and there'll be bare lot there?
I'm gonna move it back and put a level dirt, level it up with dirt. I don't know what his long-term plans are.
Okay.
I'll mark the water line, sewer line, put the box over like I always do, and take the gas line.
There's bare lot next to it, right? Yeah, this is where the house was at, the tree fell on, right? And so, this will all be bare lots in here.
Right, right. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, thank you for being here.
All right, I do have one question. Do people next door, have they still got their aggressive dog?
I don't know that.
As far as I know, yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
We can make a lot of smart aleck comments, but we won't.
You just need to understand that experience is more stronger than he is.
It could be doing us all a favor.
That's between you and the dog.
I wouldn't say get dog with.
Okay, all right.
Anything else?
No, that's it, thanks.
Well, that's kinda cool. So, that's the house.
Tony, does she have to get a permit thing and put it up on the bar? Display it?
Yes.
Yes, yes, and it'll be ready tomorrow.
Okay, I'll tell her. She'll get back sometime late tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
She can hang it in the front window of the house if she wants to. Yeah, just as long as it's on the property.
Okay, the next, the next item of business, we actually need to have a public hearing within this meeting for the rezone of 617 Main Street. You can pull it up, but you can't talk about it, or you have to go out to the audience and talk about it.
I will not say anything.
Yeah, so, anyway, we'd like to sell the property. I'm done with Lowry there. And we'd like to remain a commercial property as far as the downstairs. You know, when we changed some zoning years ago, I think eight or three years ago, that we could live on, somebody could live on the top floor.
Yes, the general zoning code, yes.
Absolutely.
Yes, that's correct.
So, I think that's what we're wanting to do with that.
Our intent is, we really see that property as the anchor of the end of the business district. And it's been a business for 35, 40 years.
40 years or something.
But somehow, it stayed zoned as residential. And, you know, I think even in our new comprehensive plan that we were also proud of and agreed on, that was, we said, no, that's part of the downtown district. And we're just trying to do that prior to us potentially selling the property, that somebody might buy it and move in there and make a house out of it. And we really don't think that's in the best interest of the town.
And it's also in the best interest of the town for tax purposes.
Yeah, it...
You know, because the commercial base, you're gonna make money off of.
Yeah. Commercial tax rate is higher than residential.
Well, and I will say, as part of this public hearing, that this was kind of a trial run on our new zoning change forms that we adopted last year. So, Rod and Lynn were required to notify the, all of the next two property owners, the next two...
Two. Two spots.
Yes, the next two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I thought you meant next to the property.
Oh, that's what I thought too. T-W-O. And it requires a certified letter informing people, which, we have the receipts for that And he had to put a notice in the local paper, in Post County News, and we've got the receipt for that here as well. So, are there any other comments from the public in this public hearing? Jim?
Yes, please. I'm not sure if the correct term is remonstrating. I'm not really in favor of that word, but it seems to be a word sometimes used in a zoning question.
Well, it's public hearing, so we'll take all publics.
James Del Stinson. I own 618 Main Street, across the street, that's why I'm here. And the property is currently zoned historic residential.
Right.
The term has been used as residential, but it's zoned historic residential, and I do have a copy of what, I guess. And I don't know whether this was codified recently. It seemed like the wording was a little bit different the last time I looked at the ordinances, but this one...
I can pull them up online.
You know, this one clearly states what the uses are. It would be permitted uses, you know, one-family historic residential permitted use and uses. And it goes on to talk about permits, specific related historic museum interpretations programs, including craft work, sales, food service, accommodations, conference space as regulated. So, I'm assuming that that's what the zoning is of that property. I'm here to ask the board to vote yes to retain the property in its current zoning because I feel it really has been that way for probably 40, 45 years. I have a book here dated 1969, which has a map in there, which really shows what the idea of that commission was at that time, and it shows specifically that property and my house across the street. It really stops at that point and doesn't go on down to other areas that are zoned historic residential. And when we're talking about historic residential, yes, the question is this particular piece of property, and so, we really aren't talking about all the other areas that they envisioned eventually to be historic residential. And what their reasoning for that was, we could draw some conclusions. But I happen to think that's an excellent zoning because it really allows you to do quite a few things. Again, yes, on the fact that it allows you to do other things, and yes, on the fact that there is a clause in there that you can apply for a variance through the Board of Appeals. And I think, my research of the property, I can think of at least one time since it was first restored about 30 or 35 years ago, that an owner of that property went ahead and did a variance, you know, on the property. Why they did that, I'm not quite sure. I guess we'd have to ask that person and why it was or was not required, but why they did it. Because again, when we go back to the terminology, it offers you many options. The other point being is that it also offers an extensive amount of protection. Because if someone wants to get outside the limits of this, then it would require a Board of Appeals hearing, which would allow the property owners, again, within 300 feet to attend that meeting and object or not object. So, there's a built-in basic protection there. And I think that's a lot about what our zoning is about when you go back, it's about protection. There's a lot of check and balance in there, including this commission, the Board of Appeals, zoning administrator, town board, all the items that you cover, you know, are things you have to do in order to make changes. So, to specifically pick out one piece of property and change a whole zoning ordinances, I have to question whether that's the right move or not. I mean, again, it offers many, many choices to do that. It also offers some protection with this existing zoning. So, again, I'm in favor of the board voting yes to retain the current zoning of the property. And those are my reasons why. Yes, they may sell the property, but what about two years down the road? What will the next person do? What will the next person after that do? This is a permanent zoning change. The way it stands here would not be a permanent zoning change. It would require, you know, permits or variances or whatever you want to say. And really, you know, it allows for residential right now. So, again, it's good zoning right now, it's good zoning there. I would like to commend Rod and Lynn for the restoration of that property. I will say that they put back in historic windows. They met all the guidelines. You know, they met all the guidelines of this application, which I think is very important. It's very unusual, in my opinion, that we are doing a whole complete zoning change. It is, as you mentioned, an opportunity to test the system out, and I think they did a very good job of meeting all those requirements if someone else wants to come in later and do a complete zoning change. I'm not talking about a variance, I'm talking about a complete zoning change here. So, I just feel like the property right now offers many options. It also offers many protections. So, again, I'm asking the board to vote yes to retain the current zoning. And if, I suppose, I don't know in a remonstration whether that allows questions and answers or not, again, that's not clear.
It's not really in the code. This is a public hearing, so traditionally, the way that runs is we give everyone who wants to speak an opportunity to speak, so...
Again, I want to narrow this down, but I would suggest in the future that you might consider two things, public speaking in one of your meetings, whether it's limited to two minutes or not, or remonstration, about how much time you allow for a remonstration. I think, again, they have met all the requirements here, but I think just for future purposes, you might want to look at your code and say, hey, I'm not positive if the town council actually has a code. I think they do that says you only are allowed two minutes to speak.
We do. But this isn't a town council meeting.
Again, remonstration is not my favorite word, and by saying yes, I want to keep the existing zoning. I'm trying to keep it in a positive fashion.
I appreciate that.
Again, if there's no questions, I'll pick up my book. If anybody ever has an interest in looking at it, it's absolutely fantastic. It was, their first ideas in 1969, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And Lynn?
Yeah, I do, I do want to point something out. Yeah, it was probably, I'm gonna say six years ago or so, that at that point, the Business Association realized what was happening within the business district itself, that we were having homes bought, or buildings within the business district being bought up as residences. And that, to me, we have such a limited business district to begin with, and then to buy them up as homes, such as the bank building, you know. But he's holding on to it and doing nothing with it. So, you know, we want to keep our business district vibrant. And I think by asking for a variance for us, we did go in front of town council at that time, and everything, they did change it at that time, that we could do business on the bottom and have someone live above.
Right.
And that's where we stood. And I think that's still a wise thing if we want to have a vibrant downtown.
Laura?
Yeah, I agree with that. As the next-door neighbor, I would be a little bit concerned what kind of business might buy it if there's big empty lots there, for example. It could be viewed as an empty lot, the side yard. And the idea of shoving in another business building, or a garage, or something that they might need. I mean, we like to think that the businesses would be small retail, or restaurants, or something like that. Airbnb's kind of, but, I think maybe that's what I meant. And my only concern is that if any kind of business could buy that, what might happen? What might they pull off that we would be really unhappy with? In allowing any kind of business to buy a historic building. Would it be historic?
Historical? Historic business.
It'd be historic business, yeah.
Respect the property, but what about the side lot?
Does it, the code does not say specifically what could happen in the side lot.
Historic business, is there an ordinance for that?
I'm pulling it up.
And what the ordinance, the upstairs can still be used as residential.
That's correct.
That's right.
Okay.
No longer downstairs, downstairs would not be residential.
Right, and that's...
The only real change is there is somebody could not live downstairs there.
On the main floor. And that was the intent of that law six years ago, seven years ago, whatever it was, to keep people from, you know, closing up the main traffic area.
Yeah, I mean, we've got very small downtown, we can't afford to do this much. I did...
Here's, here is the restrictions, the permitted uses. I'll let you read it, Tony. I may, because I'm not supposed to get too involved here, other than just acting as a property owner.
Primarily for shopping and merchandising activities with additional intent of preserving and restoring the historic context of the district. So...
That's what it would be rezoned to.
All permitted uses in the B1 district are allowed in the business historic district with the exception of the ice plant or any other similar in-house production-type retail trade.
So, no in-house production?
I don't know, I'm really on a fence here. I think Jimmy had some here good points. It's worked well with the way it is. And I, but point taken about the town needing more tax revenue, and the fact that commercial businesses can run in residential buildings right now and you don't get the taxes. I know because I pay residential tax and commercial tax.
Right.
There's a heaping difference.
Yeah.
So, I don't like paying the commercial tax, but I understand that the town needs it.
Are there comments among the commission members?
And we just make a recommendation that still has to go to the board council, correct?
Yes. Either we approve it or we don't. If we do not approve it, it doesn't go to the town council.
And then they will have a discussion and...
If they decide to change it, it will come back to us, and we would have 60 days to act on it again.
You know, my, my last comment, and I won't have a vote here, but I think the real question in my mind is, we have a comprehensive plan that says this should be zoned as, one of the new plans, currently called downtown, but it's historic business. And I think it's a question is, do we consider this property a part of our downtown and our business district? Or do you want somebody from St. Louis buying this house and making a house out of it? And that is really our intent. We'll throw one other thing in, which is kind of just a, this is kind of a silly thing, but it's true. Because Lynn has her business there, there are certain delivery, there are certain delivery companies that charge more for shipping there because it's owned residential.
Oh, right.
So, she pays more for shipping because it's owned residential. Well, it's not residential, it's been a business there for 40 years. So, just stuff like that, I think, is important to remember.
Okay, Jim, one more. We'll give each of you another shot at what you want to say.
Thank you. Again, if we look at the current zoning, it allows for the same uses, you know, retail. It allows for that to a certain extent, as long as it's within the guidelines of historic and other things, which was the original intent, 30, 35 years ago. It's worked for 35 years. That zoning has survived one major change, when the Arbor House and Gardens was first opened up. And then the second owner of the Arbor House and Garden, I believe, again, applied for a variance. Why they did that, I don't know. Did they need to? I don't know. I think they lived there at that property, but again, they could have lived there under that zoning. They can do many things with that zoning. What you do have is a protection there for future. If someone wants to make that residence, I'll have to admit, it's very quiet down there, it's a very nice place to live. If you look at the 1969 plan, it left that as a residence there, there were two structures there. You know, what's wrong with living there? Absolutely nothing. You can live there and have a shop there under the current zoning. And so, the current zoning is very flexible. Why change what has worked? You know, why, why block yourself into future use? If someone wants to buy that and live there, it's very quiet down there. Will that change if they put a certain type of business in there? You know, they're allowed to put lodging in there, they're allowed to have a restaurant in there, and that could very well change the atmosphere in the evening there and make it not as nice to live down there. But there's other residences around there that are actually falling into the historic residential areas. And so, you know, I can only speak for myself here, no one else showed up, they met all the requirements and sent all the letters out, but what is wrong with the zoning that we have? It offers future protection.
Okay. My turn. I'm loving Laura.
Oh, okay. Well, you know, we thought, well, if it stays residential, you know, it could be this, this, it could be that. But other than, let's say, improving the tax rates for the town, what is the draw of having it zoned commercial? I've lost that in here. Because the residential zoning, as it was explained to me, historic residential, was that you could do all kinds of small businesses in there. But what if you did a big noisy business if it was commercial zone? And that's not allowed under the residential zoning, as I understand, it's pretty straightforward. What did you say it was? It's, it's like, you can do, you told me that there are various ways you could use it.
Well, it's in hotels, or museum interpretation programs, craft work, sales, food service, accommodations, conference space.
Yeah, so that's clearly calm, you know what I mean? Whereas if it was wide-open commercial...
That's it right there.
I can't see.
It's not commercial, it's historic business.
Well, I know that.
In historic business, just primarily for shopping, merchandising activities with the additional intent of preserving, restoring the historical context.
So, what's the advantage other than the increased tax level?
Okay.
Of going commercial?
That's what I'd like to know. And maybe you want to answer that, or what did you want to say?
You know, I just want to, I want to address something that's going on right now. So, the building and the property across from me is up for sale by jump, and I do know that a couple's looking at buying it. So, we lose another building in the historic district. They are looking forward to living there as a residence. So, he's willing to sell it as a residence, and we'll lose another building.
And I do... That is, that is the other side of this argument.
Can I speak again then, please?
Okay, one more time, one minute, okay? We're gonna wrap it up and let the...
Again, if they want to, if the potential purchaser of that home wants to use it as a residence, it clearly states they can. If they want to use it as a part of a shop and a residence, they can clearly do that. It's been that way for years. We have a demand for residential here. You know, how different does that rule read than the rules that are already in existence? You know, we're already protected in the National Historic District, we're protected in the State Historic District. We have many protections, we have many protections with the way the zoning ordinances are set up. So, we have a safety net in there as to what can be in there in the future. And keeping it like it is, it has worked. I'm asking you to vote yes to keep the current zoning.
And I'm on the fence.
Okay. I'm gonna bring it back to the planning commission, then I'm gonna call for a motion to approve the rezon.
My question was, look, we can talk about the planning commission, or the planning document in 1969. We just passed...
A new one.
A new one.
Yeah.
And what does that plan say that we're probably going to do with that property?
Okay, so...
That's exactly what we're asking for. It would restrict it from being bought as a house. Well, but I'm on the, I'm on the commission, so I can speak as the commission.
Well, not about this, not about this, though. Do you have any comments?
The only comment I have is that with this new information here, I am on the fence also now, kind of looking at it both ways. I understand what they're saying, what the differences is. So, I'm just kind of maybe looking for something that would maybe put me on one side or the other. I just kind of, right now. I was originally leaning toward going ahead and approving the rezon on it, but a lot of what is being said makes, makes a lot of sense with the way, the way it is.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's kind of where I stand on it right now. I might, here's more information, I might be able to go to one side.
So, on that, it says the uses in B1 district, what are the uses in B1?
B1 is the business stuff. Hang on a second.
So, all those are...
Except the ice plant is excluded.
Bank cleaner, hotel motel, office, we have some of that downtown. So, it is nothing...
It's not restricting what can happen there, other than residential on the ground floor. It's the only thing.
So, no one can live...
It's the only thing.
So no one can live there, or can, they can only, if you rezon it, now I'm confused again. They still rent out, I mean, they could rent out or live upstairs.
Correct.
Well, it's residential use of an existing building, or portion there, provided that building is, is made of brick or other firewood material. So, does that, does that include the top, or that, like, if you have a back room? I'm asking, I don't know.
That was what...
That's a, that is an older section, but the, the newer code says that you can have residential, and it doesn't specify what the material in building is.
It says that you can have residential upstairs in the back 10% of the building, as long as it has a fire door, and there's some sort of fire wall.
Between, the, the commercial aspect.
It says you can, you can live on the, on the downstairs floor, but only in the back 10%.
Right, okay. That's state park code.
Right.
Yeah, so that's...
So Tony?
Number one, I understand the idea on the shipping, because getting stuff for tradeaway clay, it's, it's residential, and that, that's tomorrow, I actually have to meet a semi in front of Johnson United Methodist to move a half ton of clay to the studio with a truck. And, you know, it's part of that fun. Honestly, I see it as a disadvantage for you...
It is.
To move, because it's going to raise your taxes, it'll also be one of those things where the resale of the building will be a little more complicated. I'm wondering if you, if, what I'm saying, what are the benefits of you doing along this line?
There really are none. We're doing this because we think that's in the best interest of the town, that somebody shouldn't buy that and start living in it.
Because they're, they're being sold to people that are living in it.
We had people living in artifacts.
Yeah.
And we said...
That's what precipitated the change in the ordinance.
And that's all we're saying here, we really don't want our downtown business district full of a bunch of people living there. And that's what we said in our comprehensive plan.
Okay, I'll call for a motion to approve the rezon. Do I have a motion? Not hearing a motion to rezon, I think it dies at this point.
Okay.
I think if, if you can bring forth the whole, if you can show me the beneficial part of it, for...
It's, it's the beneficial to the town, it's not beneficial to us. It's, it's, it's not beneficial to us. We, we were doing it because we think that is in the best interest of the town, and it's consistent with the plan that we just passed.
Well, and I will say that, just for everyone's knowledge, we're going to get, I don't know when it's going to happen exactly, but we're going to have to look at every property in town.
Every one of those properties, we're, we're going to end up doing the same thing, and the comprehensive plan says that the town said that should be downtown, that should be our business district.
Commercial, down to that particular building, you know.
Well, and, well, and that also goes with the Airbnb's and sort of areas, things along those lines, we need to look at all of that in those formats. So it needs to be addressed, I, I think in the long-term format, you may get it addressed that format. But as an individual format, I'm not in favor of doing that right now, because I don't want to see that change things in such a manner that may create problems for us and other properties in the downtown.
What are you talking about, Tony? Why would it cause other problems? I mean, look, it's, it's already a dead issue, so we're just discussing now, but I mean, what other, I mean, what other properties downtown, why would it cause issues?
And whether we extend our downtown.
That's not...
Well, but the idea of extending the business area, eventually...
There's been a business in that building for 40 years.
Well, and...
But zoning-wise, is what you're discussing, I think.
That's what I'm saying, because where Rick Huffman's building is, there, Charlotte Martin had a studio in there, what, 30, 30 years ago?
Yeah, yeah. At least, at least.
So all of those properties through that area is, and can, and that's, butts up right up to the red G as well. So that should be a commercial zone as well.
Well, okay, but that's, that's an argue, you're making the argument in our case, that yes, we should protect our business district.
What I'm saying is, is that we do it as one full format for, for all the businesses at that point in time.
When we look at rezoning...
When we, we look at the zoning.
For a final zoning now.
That way we get, that way we also can check the historical preservation format for those buildings.
Okay, what, what you going to have? If we sell that building and somebody buys it and moves in as a house, then you're going to have to give them a non-conforming use whenever you change things. And you're going to have somebody living there.
Yeah.
This would have taken care of the problem, would have said, no, we think that's a part of our business district, it's going to be a business, doesn't mean you can't live upstairs. And we've had people approach us about shop downstairs and live upstairs. But, I mean, you're at risk that somebody from Louisville, or somebody's going to buy that house, or buy that building and, and make a house out of it, whenever we just passed a comprehensive plan that says we consider that a part of our business district. And you're not going to get it back, because you're going to have to give them a non-conforming use, and they'll live in there as long as they want. That was the logic behind going ahead and getting this done, because this building may sell soon. You, you know, you want to wait until we rezone the whole town? This one may be done.
True. Okay, I'm going to close, officially close the public hearing on this, Blue Cardinal Properties, and we'll go on to the next issue. We need to set up a special meeting of this commission, because we need to put basically a line item in the comprehensive plan, the calendar, the schedule of when you look at everything on a yearly basis. We need to put in an infrastructure plan, and that's something that Rod has been working on for a while now, to try to get a grant to do that, and we need for the comp plan to support that. So I am asking you all to come for a five-second meeting on November 5th at 5:00 PM.
I'll hold you to that five second.
Okay, I can do it. If nobody, if nobody has comments, you know, but really, basically, it's, we need to do that, and then it needs to go to the town council, so. November 5th at 5:00 PM, we, that'll be a public hearing as well, we need 10 days' notice, we need to put it in the paper, et cetera, et cetera. So, November 5th, and I will remind you all, and that will be the only item on that, during that meeting. And I need, you can work among yourselves, I need four people here.
Okay, November 5th at 5:00 PM?
Yeah, that's a Wednesday.
Okay.
I just wanted to show...
So if we get in the paper next week, that'll give us our 10 working days' notice. That's all I had on my agenda. I didn't know if you just wanted to say a few things about the redevelopment commission, and what, what the council's doing, just I want them to be aware of that.
Yeah, next Tuesday at our council meeting, we are, we'll vote to engage a law firm that will create what's called a redevelopment commission. And a redevelopment commission then has the authority to, the authority, I don't know if that's the word, but they, they have the authority, the redevelopment commission has the authority to, one of the things, one of the principal things, is to do TIF funding. For example, the way a residential TIF works is the stout, the state allows you to go upfront and spend money on development and stuff, like building roads and stuff like that, and it gets paid off, you go ahead and spend the money now, it gets paid off by the tax dollars that you know that that's going to generate. So like, the new subdivision out there, if we're going to have to spend a bunch of money to get that ready for, it's, it's a, it's a way to finance that upfront, to get it done now, when you need to get it done, and it gets paid off by the taxes later on. That's one of the things a redevelopment commission does. But we can't do, we can't even look at whether or not that makes sense or not, until you do that.
Well, and from my point of view, what's most important to me is whether we're going to be involved in the subdivision or not as a town, if we don't do a redevelopment commission with all of the property within the boundaries, then any development could be picked up by, you know, Mount Vernon, or the county, or, you know, there, there, so we wouldn't even have a choice of getting the tax benefit. So, we need to take control of the property within the borders. This could also be relevant if somebody wanted to do some infill building, you know, in all the vacant lots that are within the town. Sometimes TIF works for that, too. So there are lots of ways it can be used. I mean, we're all, we've all learned about this, I mean, this is a, but we know that we want to, we want the town to control what happens. So, that's basically the way I look at it.
I agree with that, that's, and the TIF also, the city can borrow against that if, for future development along those lines, but that's where my discussion, working with an LLC worries me somewhat, and we need to have a narrative format on that.
Well, right, right. And so we have been talking, we have been talking to firms that can represent the town in whatever might happen at the school property.
Project manager.
All aspects of it. From design, to infrastructure, to financing, to the whole thing.
The engineering.
The whole thing.
I just know my hometown laws. Half a million dollars, infrastructure investment that they did for...
That they didn't get back, you know, because they start a project and then walk away. Yeah, yeah.
And that was, that's why I'm concerned about that.
Right.
Okay, so this TIF is basically a loan?
It's a grant, it's more complicated than that.
Okay, because I heard you say that the property out there, the taxes would be paying that back?
Yeah, it's kind of like a bond, you go get a bond, so in essence, it is a bit of a loan. What you do is you, you borrow the money to get done what you need to get done, and the bond gets paid off by the increase in tax money that's going to result from that happening. Meaning, you're going to have more houses built, therefore, you're going to have more tax revenue, and so when you sell the bond, that's what pays the bond off. Now, I'll be honest with you, residential TIFs often don't work out. So just forming the redevelopment commission just gives us the ability to do the study to figure out whether or not this makes sense.
And that's where I was getting ready to go.
That's another whole thing.
That's another whole animal.
Well, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking, okay, if this doesn't develop, and all this money is already...
That is correct, that's the risk.
Yeah, well, we're not the only person who's...
That is, that is the risk.
Yeah, so who's responsible, liable?
Well, Steve, there are ways of making the developer be the guy on the line for that.
Okay, okay.
So, but just forming the RDC is the first step, because you can't even go there and look at that until you have this.
A lot of this is brand new to me.
Same here.
Well, all of us, all of us.
Okay.
And we're all learning at the same time.
And the concept of what's being said...
Well, and that's why I wanted to at least touch on it here tonight, so that you all can know what, what this is about.
Yeah, I don't mean to be a Debbie Danner on this, but if, you know, worst-case, worst-case scenario, someone could be liable for a pretty fair amount of...
No, no, that's true statement. That's true statement.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of where my thinking went on that.
Okay, that's, that's our agenda tonight. We're getting more efficient with our time. Do I have a motion to end our meeting adjourned? All right.
Jonathan's always the first on that.